It's December 17th, 2019, and I'd like to call our meeting to order. It's now 6:01. Before we enter into executive session, I want to remind everyone that Board Member Jada Garrus has submitted a statement of recusal dated December 4th, 2018, thereby abstaining herself of all votes, deliberations, and other actions on the following matters. Jada Garrus individually and on behalf of all others similarly situated versus Lexington County School District One, case number 2017 CP 3204435. The recusal states the reason for the disqualification is that Ms. Garrus is a litigant in the above-mentioned matter who possesses a financial interest in its outcome. Therefore, Ms. Garrus will not be present during this discussion in executive session. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session to consider employment recommendations for 2019-2020? A property and contractual matter related to the purchase of property for a new elementary school in the White Knoll attendance area? And to receive legal advice concerning a pending lawsuit?
Madam Chair, I move that the board go into executive session for the purposes of discussion of employment recommendations for the 2019-20 school year, discussions of a property contractual matter related to the purchase of property for a new elementary school in the White Knoll attendance area, and receipt of legal advice concerning pending claims and other matters covered by attorney-client privilege.
We now have a motion on the floor from Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous, and we will step into executive session. We'd like to welcome everyone to the December 17th, 2019, School Board Meeting for Lexington School District One. We want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and all the different holidays. And can you believe we are one week away from Christmas? I mean, it's coming down on us. I want to see by a show of hands how many have your presents wrapped and your cookies baked. Uh-oh. Oh! Greg's got a wonderful wife, let's put it that way, Dr. Little. Well, anyway, I hope you're ready for the holidays. At this time, do I hear a motion?
I didn't ask the question. How many of you have not bought any presents yet?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn executive session and begin open session?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. I would like to call to order the general session of the December 17th, 2019 Board Meeting. The district is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. We have notified the media of the date, time, and place of this meeting, and we would like to let you know that the district does tape this meeting for accuracy in preparing the minutes. And at this time, I'd like to call on Dr. Powers for invocation. Dr. Powers?
So, thank you. I spent some time looking for a Christmas prayer, so I've modified this a little bit for Lexington One, but this is from Henry Van Dyke. He was an American novelist that was born in 1852 and was also a Presbyterian minister. So, let's bow our heads, and it's titled Keeping Christmas. Lexington One, are you willing to forget what you've done for other people and to remember what other people have done for you? To ignore what the world owes you and to think what you owe the world? To put your rights in the background and your duties in the middle distance and your changes to do a little more than your duty in the foreground? To see that men and women are just as real as you are and to look behind their faces to their hearts, hungry for joy? To own up to the fact that probably the only good reason for your existence is not what you are going to get out of life, but what you are going to give to life? To close your book of complaints against the management of the universe and look around you for a place where you can sow a few seeds of happiness? Are you willing to do these things for a day? Then you could keep Christmas. Lexington One, are you willing to stoop down and consider the needs and desires of little children? To remember the weakness and loneliness of people growing old? To stop asking how much your friends love you and ask yourself whether you love them enough? To bear in mind the things that other people have to bear in their hearts? To try to understand that those who live in the same home with you what they really want without waiting for them to tell you? To trim your lamp so that it will give you more light and less smoke? And to carry it in the front so that your shadow will fall behind you? To make a grave for your ugly thoughts and a garden for your kindly thoughts with the gates open? Are you willing to do these things, Lexington One, even for a day? Then you could keep Christmas. Lexington One, are you willing to believe that love is the strongest thing in the world, stronger than hate, stronger than evil, stronger than death? And that the blessed life which began in Bethlehem 2,000 years ago is the image and brightness of the eternal love? Will you, Lexington One? Then, then you will know Christmas. Amen.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Powers, and thank you, Mr. Van Dyke. Okay. Board, you have an agenda in front of you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Is there any discussion regarding the agenda, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Board members, you have been provided copies of the minutes for the November 19th, 2019 regular Board Meeting. Other than the corrections already provided and made, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as received. Item 7.0, Board, do I hear a motion to approve five certified recommendations for the 2019-2020 school year?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the five certified employment recommendations for the 2019-20 academic school year as recommended by Dr. Little.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Is there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Board, do I hear a motion to approve two administrative recommendations for the 2019-2020 school year?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the two administrative recommendations for the 2019-2020 school year as recommended by Dr. Little.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions or comments regarding the two administrative positions?
Yes, I move to divide the question so as to consider separately the question of approving the administrative position of Communications Director.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Garrus. Let's see how we would do that. Let's see. I need first, let's see, do I need to take a vote? Because we've already got a motion and a second. I'm trying to think how we do. Let's go ahead and take a vote on them together, and, and, wait a minute. I'm not sure how to do this. How should I, how should I do this?
You just divided the question. I make a motion to approve one administrative.
Well, I know, but we've already taken a motion and a second on it. You should have made it at the time of the motion. Okay, I take, we'll just, we'll, let's take a vote on this, and we'll pull it off the floor. Do I have a motion to pull the motion from the floor of the two joint positions for the, two administrative positions for the 2019-2020 school year? Okay, we don't have a second, so we will vote as already stated. So, we already have a motion and a second on the two administrative positions for the 2019-2020 school year. Do I have a, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed?
I'm opposed. I also have some discussion.
Let's go back and have a discussion then.
Okay. I'm voting no because in the current budget, we have a position for a manager for $54,000, and what we're asking tonight is to approve a director position for over $80,000. So, that's my reason for voting no.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Garrus. So, at this time, we have a vote of six to one, six in favor, and one opposed for the two positions. Board members, receive legal advice concerning a pending lawsuit in executive session. I want to remind everyone that Board Member Jada Garrus has submitted a statement of recusal dated December 4th, 2018, thereby abstaining herself of all votes, deliberations, and other actions on the following matter. Jada Garrus individually and on behalf of all others similarly situated versus Lexington County School District One, case number 2017 CP 3204435. The recusal states the reason for the disqualification is that Ms. Garrus is a litigant in the above-mentioned matter who possesses a financial interest in its outcome. Therefore, Ms. Garrus was not present during this discussion in executive session. At this time, there are no actions on that particular matter. We are now going to move to the contractual matter. Board members, considered a property contractual matter related to the purchase of property for a new elementary school in the White Knoll attendance area. Do I hear a motion regarding this property contractual matter?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the purchase of a piece of property per an agreement dated April 9, 2019 with Linda K. Mack and Jimmy R. Schumpert. The property is 35.0 acres and is known by Lexington County as TMS number 007600-02-046. The consideration for this property is $350,000. This total equates to $10,000 per acre.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Guyton. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald. Let's open this up for discussion, Board, and let's start with Mr. Salters walking us through this discussion, and then we'll open it up to the Board for questions or comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Dr. Little, I call your attention to the screen. I have a brief presentation related to this property. As you recall, this is for our 19th elementary school in the district, and this was a rendering of a prototype of this elementary school. This is based on the design that was first started at Rocky Creek Elementary School and then evolved at Medaglin Elementary and in Deerfield, and most recently Centerville Elementary, which this image is a rendering of. So, this will be built also in the River Bluff attendance area, and that's actually number 18. And so, I just want to remind you of that, that prototype plan that will be used for this, this property. To orient you where the property is located, this is South Lake Drive, more commonly called Highway 6, headed out towards the Pelearian area. At the top of the screen is White Knoll High School, so Platte Springs Road comes across right up in here. New Publix is right over here on this corner. And the most closely aligned cross street is Bluefield Road. Many of you may have picked blueberries in the field that's back here behind this property. And then, you'll also note that the new neighborhood where this road was realigned, Bluefield was a dirt road on this side for many, many years, and it was recently realigned when the Bluefield neighborhood was developed, or purchased and, and developed by the Mungo Homes. And so, it's adjacent to that, and there will be about 700-plus homes in this area on top of the already 700 or so homes that are, you see on the screen there. And so, in our 2018 facility study, when our consultant was recommending areas for land purchase, this particular piece of land actually sat in the center of, of the area where they recommended us locating an elementary school to serve this future growth population. You'll also note on the screen, this jagged line right here is actually our Lexington District One attendance boundary. So, in this area, you're actually crossing to Lexington Two for a brief period of time before crossing back into Lexington One. So, it's situated close to the areas of development. A closer shot there of just the proposed site. And then, want to look briefly at the topography of the land. You're now accustomed to seeing these little squiggly lines, and basically, the way this site is oriented, we have a higher elevation up in this top corner, and the land slopes down to a lower elevation here, and there's a draw that runs down adjacent to Highway 6 and flows on down the road here, and it ultimately feeds into a creek. So, this elevation change is similar to what we would see. I've used this example before of Beechwood Middle School, where we had a, if you, if you ride by that school, we have an elevation drop that goes down, and we made use of that with a retention pond at the bottom, and we would do a similar configuration on this site. Also, looking at wetlands and pond and stream buffers areas on the site that we work really hard not to impede on through our development here in Lexington One. And so, on this site, it's approximately three acres, and you see these delineated here of wetland area, about eight and a half percent of the site. And just for reference, I've used this one before, but Lake Mary Elementary has the most wetland area that, that has been protected on our campuses, at about 25 and a half acres, or about 43.2% of that site. So, you can see, we do have the ability to develop around those, those areas pretty well. And this is an early rendering of what the, the site layout configuration might look like. We have multiple drive accesses. The primary access here on South Lake, Highway 6, is a bus or service entrance. So, that's where our buses would come in, drop off in, in the back of the school, and this is the cafeteria area. And, and so, and also the gym area that's connected to the cafeteria. And then, the, the main parent drop-off would, would be off of Bluefield Road, and we have a, a long 2,000-plus linear feet of stacking that is leading up to the campus, and that's designed so that it can be double-stacked with cars with the intent of getting all of the traffic off of Bluefield Road in the afternoon when, when parents queue up to, to pick their, their children up. And then, of course, they flow on, on around and through for an exit back out onto Bluefield. And you notice we do have a fire access road that's delineated all the way around the campus, and so, and then on the lower side, we, we would use this area as a retention pond to take use of the natural shape of the land in, in the, in the area. So, and then, just to recap again, just the site, and, and as we've talked before, we really try to locate our schools where students are to minimize the traffic movements of our, of our parents. And so, the two large developments coming in here, it will serve this area very well to have this school closely aligned to those areas.
And, Mr. Salters, remind everyone what's up at the top where Platte Springs Road is?
Up here at the top, that's, that's White Knoll High School in that area, and to the left, down Platte Springs, we have Carolina Springs Elementary in the middle, and then to the right, and then north just a little bit, we have Sack Scott Elementary School. And then, you may recall as well, if you continue on up South Lake, the YMCA property has recently changed hands, and that is going to be another about 400 homes, and that really will impact Red Bank Elementary, which is just north of that. So, really, a lot of growth coming to that area, so we really need to be prepared to serve those future students.
Board, you've heard Mr. Salters' presentation. Are there any questions or comments?
I just want to thank the district in looking hard for the site. You know, it's interesting, there's a lot of discussion about traffic, and I get it, but as a school board in a district, our obligation is to meet the education needs of the kids that move to our district. And we know that excellent education's driving growth, but we're really not in the infrastructure business. But choosing this site on the periphery of the district is about the only thing we can do to try to spread that. So, again, thank you for, because we talked about it a couple of years ago, of finding this site, so.
Well, as you recall, our message in our referendum planning was we, we want to really try to shape the growth instead of react to it. And that's, I think, alluding to what you're saying there, and that's, that's really what we're trying to do here.
Well, and we've been in good dialogue with county council, because that, again, is where the infrastructure and controls can be put in place for growth. So, again, we're in dialogue with them as well.
And I'm just curious, when the, when Malona McBroom did the study, was it anticipated that the YMCA property would be sold and developed? Or was it anticipated that it was going to remain?
That's an interesting, interesting point. We talked about that earlier today. Actually, that particular tract was anticipated to remain as a YMCA. I mean, typically, those, those sites don't turn over, much like, you know, county properties. And so, that was, that was an unforeseen development that will, you know, will occur.
Board, any other questions or comments?
Yes, I would like to say thank you for getting us the due diligence documents ahead of tonight's Board Meeting, as opposed to afterwards when we usually get them. However, I know I just received this yesterday. That's the first time it was offered to me, so I haven't had a chance to review everything in here, and I would really like a chance to look at the traffic impact studies before taking a vote.
Okay. Well, we already have a motion and a second on the floor, so that should have been brought up before the motion was made. Board, we do have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. As a reminder, this is the purchase of the property for the new elementary school in the White Knoll attendance area. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, so, we now have a six to one vote, and the motion carries. And, Mr. Salters, go ahead and buy that land, and let's get some classrooms for the children in White Knoll. At this time, it's now 8.0 honors and achievements. I'm going to ask Dr. Little to step down, and I think this is what most of you are here for.
Oh, I've got it. It's on the next page.
Here is it. It's not on here. Okay. Okay. We have a special, this, we're going to do it a little bit different tonight, and I'm going to wing it right here, as Mary Beth brings over this part of the script. We are going to be celebrating our students with, who focus on international languages. That's okay. And so, tonight, we, when you came in, you signed in, you picked up a packet of the Haribo Gold Bears, invented by Haribo. Did everybody get one?
Yes.
Okay, good. Normally, we don't feed you, but we fed you tonight. To be exact, Hans Regel, a candy maker from the German city of Bonn, invented the product in the 1920s and created the name Haribo by combining letters from his name with the name of his home city. Special greeters met you at the door or inside the auditorium. These special greeters are all of, are some of our German students, our students who focus on the German language. We have Gilbert Middle, Middle School 7th grader Bryson Cook. We have Pelearian High 11th grader Braxton Brazel. We have Pleasant Hill Middle 8th grader Erin Marie Coyle, and River Bluff High 11th grader Mariah V. Sikirzyskia? Did I, am I close? Is she, is she here?
Yes.
Can, can you say your name for me so I'll, at least one time it will be pronounced correctly by someone other than me? I see, that's what I said. Wasn't that? And she, she did it so beautifully, too. Thank you, and I, I really, I'm going to apologize. That was a hard one. And now, we want to welcome Deerfield Elementary 4th grader Theodore Richard Delly, who has, he is going to greet us. So, take it away, Theodore.
Thank you. Guten Abend.
Okay, hold the microphone up, because we're, they're going to tape you.
Okay. Guten Abend. Ich heiße Theodore Richard Delly. Ich möchte Sie zu December Präsentation das Vorstandes begrüßen und Ihnen ein wenig über die sprachen Erzählen, die in Amin das Emotions und andere French Sprachen Programmen angeboten werden. Ich bin ein Teil des Emotionsprogramms mein Dir verlamentiere, wo ich Deutsch lerne. Ich spreche schon fleißig Englisch und Portugiesisch. Der Schulbesuch hat 21,341 Schuhe, die der sei einer oder mehrere French Sprachen lernen. Es gibt viele Gründe, eine andere Sprache zu lernen. Hier sind nur einige. Erstens, eine zweite Sprache verbessert dein Kompetenzen und deine Noten in Mathe und in Englisch, außerdem auch in SAT und GRE. Zweitens, unsere analytischen Kompetenzen, unsere Kreativität und unsere Erinnerung verbessert sich auch, wenn wir ein French Sprache lernen. Drittens, das Lernen von French Sprachen verbessert unsere Chancen in den Bereichen der Regierung, Wirtschaft, Medizin, Rechtswissenschaft, Technologie, Militär, Industrie, Marketing und so weiter. Danke, dass Sie heute Abend gekommen sind. Wir heißen Sie willkommen.
Okay. I, I mean, that was incredible, Theodore. I think, I know all those companies in the upstate that are German, they'll, they're going to be looking at him to hire him soon, so congratulations. That was wonderful. So, we have a little thing that we say where we recognize all the students and the employees. Since we're kind of getting off script tonight, I'm, you know what? I'm going to get way off script, and I'm going to skip that part, and we're going to go straight to you guys. How about that? So, honorees, when you hear your award or name, come on up and stand with Dr. Little here in the front while we brag about you. And we're going to start tonight with some of our impressive golf accomplishments. Lexington High School junior Carly Vardis, who is ranked second as a South Carolina junior female golfer, recently committed to play golf and further her education at Georgia Southern University as a junior. Since Vardis joined the Lexington Wildcat Girls Varsity Golf Team in the 7th grade, she made the All-Region Team five times and the All-State Team four times, and the team took three team-state championships. This year, she won the 2019 South Carolina Class 5A Girls Individual Gold State Championship by shooting three under par. After a playoff round with a Blythewood golfer, she birdied on the second playoff hole to clinch the title. During the 2019 high school fall golf season, Vardis had five wins and five second-place finishes in 11 tournaments with a cumulative score of 10 under par for the entire season. Let's give her a round of applause.
Ms. Smith, there were some very athletic men in the back there, I think, wondering if they need to take golf lessons.
I think so, I think so. Okay, now, we're going to swing over to tennis. Winning its second Class 5A state championship as a tennis team in three years, the River Bluff High Girls tennis team became the, the school's first-time state champion team, best in the state. The team coached by Brian J. Lim consists of Medaglin Middle 8th grader Patricia Silva-Salvador and River Bluff High School seniors Jacobia A. Abraham, Shelby Byers, Claire Floyd, Jessie Hollins, Riley Mitchell, Kiana Thatcher, sophomore Leanne Zoo, and freshman Jordan Schaumberg. Senior Kiana Thatcher and sophomore Leanne Zoo rallied from first-set losses to win their matches just as senior Claire Floyd completed her victory. Senior Jessie Hollins then led the team to a comeback win over JL Mann High School. Jessie also made school history by winning her semifinal and final tennis matches. This is the school's first individual girls tennis title, the 2019 Class 4A/5A Girls Individual Tennis, let's say it again, state championship. She completed the season undefeated 27 to 0 and signed with Coastal Carolina to play next year. Hollins was also named All-American Player of the Year. As if that wasn't enough, Claire Floyd and Jessie Hollins capped off the year by being named to the 2019 All-State, and Coach Brian Lim became the 2019 Region Tennis Coach of the Year. Okay, tonight's fun. Yeah. Oh. Yeah, she's going to, come on up, and we're going to hand her a microphone. Okay, let's celebrate our German program's accomplishments now. First, you should know that here in Lexington School District One, 89% of elementary students are taking a world language elective. 89.5% of middle school students are taking a world language. And 49.7% of high school students are taking a world language class this school year. River Bluff High junior, you going to help me?
Maria Sikirzyskia.
Oh, so beautiful. Became a Top 14 German Olympiad finalist in the Goethe Institute International Deutsche Olympiad. 270 students from 86 schools and 29 states completed, competed. As a result of placing in that prestigious Top 14, she was flown to Chicago to compete in another two-day, four-part German assessment. At that level of competition, in the German Olympiad National Competition, Maria, is it Maria?
Yes.
Maria took third place. What an accomplishment. Way to go. We have more German accomplishments. Lexington County School District One's German program received German Center of Excellence designation, a national designation presented by the American Association of Teachers of German. The award application process led by Sarah Buckle and Miriam Grandjohn, is that correct? Okay, good. Included a website built by the district's German teachers and much time and hard work. The award letter stated that this was clear evidence that the program had strong support from administration, professional colleagues, parents, students, and the community. The district has 11 schools offering German courses from the novice low to intermediate high levels with 17 German teachers and 1,342 students currently enrolled in German classes just this year. Teachers take a variety of tests ranging from the Praxis ETS to an oral proficiency interview to qualify to teach German in South Carolina. In fact, the district boasts 12 active AATG members, including the current South Carolina Chapter Vice President and the current AATG Secretary. All the district's German teachers spent time abroad to hone their language skills and many still travel to German-speaking countries to stay in tune. Thanks to World Language Coordinator Lauren Liza E. Spees, Ph., Dr. Lauren Liza E. Spees, World Language Lead Teacher Amanda Haji, and the district's German teachers who worked so hard on this. Beechwood Middle Schools Rebecca Cornet Schnitzer? This, I'm gonna tell y'all right now and I'm gonna apologize, this is the hardest pronunciation of names I think I've ever had the whole time I've ever done this. So if I butcher your name, please accept my apologies. Carolina Springs Middle Schools Nicole Matthews, Deerfield Elementary Schools Callison Coggins, Jay Werner Castle T., Sandra Schillington Lopez, and Madine Yigget. Gilbert High Schools Anita Lambert, Gilbert Middle Schools Arena Kalink, Kalinkina? Am I close? Am I close? Lexington High Schools Christopher Godwin and John Clay Hendricks, Lexington Middle Schools Cassandra Boyter, Pelear High Schools Victoria Conley, Pleasant Hill Middle Schools Miriam Grandjohn, River Bluff High Schools Sarah Buckle, and White Knoll High Schools Caroline Oates. Okay, well, now we wanna call Sarah Buckle back up. Can she come back up for just a minute? River Bluff High School Sarah Buckle is only one of 12 German teachers selected and professionally trained for the role of German coach. In this role, highly experienced educators of German, carefully selected and trained by the Goethe Institute, support German teachers across the United States and teach best practices. German teachers are provided a coach for individual or group training with a focus on lesson planning and classroom practices. The German full immersion coaching complies with Common Core standards and takes place over several weeks, including online preparation, classroom observations, and targeted feedback. Sarah Buckle also serves as the current South Carolina AATG Vice President and has received the Goethe Teacher Certificate of Merit. We just wanna celebrate all these teachers and celebrate Sarah. Okay, we're gonna completely switch now, we're going to Kentucky. So Lexington High School senior Caroline Kelly recently competed in the Kentucky National Horse Show with her lease horse Hopscotch. On Friday, she won the over fences portion of her division and took fourth place on the flat individual portion. Excuse me. On Saturday, she took third place in over fences. The Lexington 4H Horse Club's cumulative points earned the team the title of Champion of the 16 to 17-year-old Equitation Division. This was Caroline's first double A-rated horse show and national horse show. Is she here? Okay, let me get a sip of water. Hmm. Okay, now, we're going to football. Coached by Matthew Hornsby, captains and eighth graders Jaden Bradford, Montrel Bird, Ryan McFarland, Taden Mines, and Cam Sutton represent the Pleasant Hill Middle School Cougars football team tonight. Are they here? Come on up. Wow, and they look so handsome. This year, for the first time, Lexington School District One partnered with other districts to create the Lexington 10 Middle School Football Competition. The Middle School Football Championship Game came down to two Lexington District One teams, Pleasant Hill Middle and Gilbert Middle. The Pleasant Hill Middle Cougars won the game 26 to 0 and the trophy, after Jordan Bradford scored four touchdowns, so, excuse me, Jaden Bradford, Jaden, raise your hand so we'll know which one you are. Is he here?
Yeah.
Raise your, okay, right here. The Cougars gave up only six points all season and finished undefeated 8 to 0. We couldn't fit the entire team in here tonight, however, we want to recognize the entire team. They are eighth graders Rashad Bennett, Dylan Boland, Chase Bond, Jaden Bradford, Micah Bridges, Daniel Bryan, Montel Bird, Duke Cleary, Jack Cooper, Jonathan Coin, Charles DiMarco, Dominik Faraci, Jordan, did I mispronounce that?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Farachi. Jordan Friar, Garrett Gallagher, is that right? Gallagher?
Gallagher.
Okay. Jacob Gebfurt, Jalen Green, Shane Hannah, Grayson Hudgens, Cam Lott, Ryan McFarland, Taden Mines, Gracie Molten, Seth Reynolds, Evan Rothery, Nicholas Rowe, Kristen Sexton, Cameron Scott, Cameron Spencer, Keegan Spencer, Cameron Sutton, and Weldon Williamson. And the seventh graders included Brenton Baker, Kristen Becerra, Jackson Broyles, Jacob Bird, Stephen Crawford, Deandre Dennis, Deacon DiMarco, Maddox Free, Abram Goldar, Griffin Harris, Shane Heller, Sam Hiller, MJ Hornsby, Tori Jones, Artem Kalink, Kalinkin, Hayden Lawler, John Markham, Madison Moore, Antoine Morris, Jaron Sanders, Lionel Seago, David Taylor, and Bradley Vest. And if I really butchered somebody's name, I truly apologize, but let's celebrate these young men. And I, and I wanna stop for just a minute and I wanna thank Coach Bennett and I wanna thank Dr. Little. This was kind of a vision of theirs and this is the first year we've ever done this. And for those of you who work with middle schoolers, keeping them involved and busy is a very positive thing and I have heard nothing but positive things about this program. So let's thank them for having this vision. Okay, South Carolina recently recognized the winners of its 4H Golden Egg Contest, which assesses 4H members' ability to raise chickens that produce high-quality eggs. Gilbert Elementary School fourth grader Mary Rae Oxner won first place in the junior division. The competition has opened to South Carolina 4H members who participated in a 4H poultry project this past year and have a flock of chickens currently laying eggs. Participants submitted one dozen eggs. Using the same testing measures applied in commercial poultry production, judges considered uniform appearance and consistent interior quality. Based on their exterior, interior, weight, uniform size, and shell thickness, Oxner's chicken eggs graded out as a double A based on USDA standards. Her flock, raised by Oxner since they were less than a week old, now lay their prize-winning eggs daily. So let's give her a round of applause.
I'm interested in fresh eggs, by the way.
And, and I think those are golden comets? What, what chickens are they? Golden comets? Yeah.
Oh, that's exciting. With the Meadow Glen Middle School Cheerleading Squad captains and eighth graders Addison Kennedy, is it Michaela? Michaela Clampett, Corley Collins, Riley Dean, and Caitlin Haynesworth and their coach Kiki Woolley and her assistants Amber Chavis and Savannah Pettit, please come forward. And here they are. These team members are representing the squad tonight. The Meadow Glen Middle School Cheerleading Squad competed in six competitions this season. They took home four first-place finishes, one second-place finish, and one third-place finish. Best of all, they finished the season strong as they won the 5A Middle School Championship, the first time in school history that cheerleading earned the state title. This competition took place at the Debbie Rogers Cheer Classics held at Colonial Life Arena. The team of 17 eighth graders and 10 seventh graders consists of Kealan Barnes, Gabby Bragg, Ellis Ambrosy, Lily Bryant, Addie Kennedy, Michaela Clampett, Corley Collins, Caroline Cresswell, Jas, is it Jasmine or Jasmine?
Jasmine.
Jasmine Clark, Haley David, Riley Dean, Grace Hare, Caitlin Haynesworth, Ava Huffstettler, Alexandria Mack, Bella Grace McWaddy, Emily Nichols, Kirsten Peoples, Kirsten Anne, Pri, Prior Esche, Peyton Ritchie, Ella Robertson, Brooklyn Sloan, Kendra Tanner, Leela Trapp, Sidney Williams, Madison Zunuga?
Zunuga.
Zunuga, and Zoe Woody. So let's give these ladies a round of applause. We're gonna go to the fair now. Students showed off their range of talents and artistic skills during the annual South Carolina State Fair by winning many first-place awards. Three Lexington Middle School students, sixth grader Rosalie Jeremillo, seventh grader Haley Thomas, and sixth grader Taryn Thomas took home eight first-place awards and won Best in Class Award. Rosalie won Novice Western Horsemanship and Novice Western Champion Awards. Haley won Equitation over fences 18 inches, Western Horsemanship 12 and under, Western Pleasure 12 and under, and 12 and under Western Champion Awards. Taryn scored first-place awards in food candy and food pie and she took the Good Pie Best in Class. I was trying to know what kind of pie that was. Lexington High School freshman Ethan Willie won the 13 to 15 Western Reserve Champion Award. Five Pleasant Hill Elementary School students received first-place recognition for their art and photography. Fifth grader Ella Copeland in three-day, 3D art. First grader Isabella Mazini in 2D art. First grader Logan Sayers in photography. And fifth grader Charlotte Spencer in 2D art. Fifth grader Annika Schweiger took home the Best of Show Award in 2D art. Pleasant Hill Middle School's sixth-grade students also took home first-placed art and photography awards. Elizabeth Cole took first place in photography while Tate Welch took first place in 3D art. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, now we're gonna leave the students and we're gonna head over with our teachers. Since Pleasant Hill Elementary students won the most ribbons for art entries in the South Carolina State Fair, they earned special recognition for their art teachers, Anya Dagtiarova? Riva? Am I close? Dagtiarova? And Patricia Green. Anya and Green received the South Carolina State Fair Elementary Art Teachers Award for shaping and supporting their students' artistic talents. Fifteen Pleasant Hill Elementary students won first, second, or third-place ribbons and multiple merit awards in the 2D and 3D student art competition. Green and Anya led their students with a combined 39 years of experience. Are they here? No? Okay, let's give them a round, oh, wait a minute, here she goes. The 2019 Lexington Emergency Education Assistance Plan, better known as LEAP, a Lexington School District One Educational Foundation annual campaign funded solely through employee donations, runs during the first few weeks of the school year. Thanks to the generosity of our Lexington District One family members, the results enable the foundation to assist the district and its families in a number of important ways. The Emergency Fund helps families experiencing a crisis who need temporary help to survive, while the Education Fund helps the district with important educational programs and initiatives. Foundation Executive Director Julie Anderson Washburn will come forward, there she is, and she is going to hand out the awards as we recognize these groups. During the LEAP campaign, 2,584 employees donated 164,671 dollars and 88 cents. Let's give them a round of applause. Elementary schools recognized for having the highest giving increase over last year include Pelear Elementary School, represented by Principal Debbie Poole, and LEAP representatives Susan Harmon and Ruth Spence. Are they here? Red Bank Elementary School, represented by Principal Janet Reichardt, and LEAP representatives Brittany McGargle and Lyddie Carpenter Parish, are they here? Here comes Ms. Janet.
Your sweater off.
Well, I like the back. Saxo Gothra Elementary School, represented by Principal Beth Howe, and LEAP representatives Andrea Slice and Deanna Thacker. Are they here? There's Ms. Howe?
Madam Chair, if I could make a point of privilege here?
Yeah.
I was a LEAP representative with the district for many years and I just wanna thank these folks for doing such an outstanding job to a program that really tugs at my heartstrings. Thank y'all so much.
In the highest giving increase for middle schools, Gilbert Middle School, represented by Principal Benji Reichardt, and LEAP representatives Courtney Harold and Molly Sutcliffe increased their giving more than any other middle school. And in the highest giving increase for high schools, Lexington Technology Center, represented by Principal Bryce Myers, and LEAP representatives Sarah Gillespie and Robert Ziegler increased their giving more than any other high school. Food, Service, and Nutrition showed the highest giving increase in support offices outside of schools. They are represented by Director Sally Nicholson and LEAP representative Polly Peggingshouse and Ashley Summers. We're gonna stop for a photograph right there. Bryce, you, you need a frog or, you just got a banner.
Well, it's school, we're in the high school.
Oh. Let's, let's give them a round of applause while they're getting their picture made. And last but not least, the final award, which is probably, I think, says the most because it just shows what a commitment this school had to this program, is the 100% Participation Award. That means that all the employees in this school gave to these programs. It goes to Lake Murray Elementary School, represented by Principal Jennifer Stanley, and LEAP representatives Kimberly Nunnery and Christina Reed. Are they here? Yeah, let's give them a round of applause. We're actually gonna ask Dr. Little to come forward, not to himself. If you would come forward to accept this award for the district. Readers of the state newspaper voted Lexington School District One the best public school district for the fifth year running. The district received this award in 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019. The state's annual Best of Contest allows residents to vote on their favorite restaurants, services, schools, and more. The newspaper then announces the winners in a special supplement in the paper. "One of the fastest-scoring school districts in the state, ranking sixth in total enrollment. We are proud of our excellent academic reputation, our students' academics, arts and athletic accomplishments, and the accomplishments of our teachers and professional staff." Lexington District One now serves twenty-seven thousand five hundred students from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve with nearly four thousand employees. And that doesn't even include our substitutes. We have thirty-one schools, seventeen elementary schools, eight middle schools, five high schools, and one technology center. Yes, we are very proud of Lexington One, and thank you to everyone who made that happen. Working in Supportive Education, also known as WISE, named Lexington Technology Center Business Teacher Randy Scott as the recipient of the Gold Star Teacher Award. Come on up, Mr. Scott. This is his eighth consecutive year to be considered for the Gold Star Teacher Award. A teacher must achieve a ninety-three percent pass rate in at least one of his or her classes on either the Fall or Spring WISE Financial Literacy Certification Test. Scott challenges his students to become financially capable by emphasizing and providing instruction on relevant personal finance topics. Way to go, Mr. Wise. I mean, not Mr. Wise, Mr. Scott. But he is wise. In a minute, I'm gonna turn it over to Theodore. He would do a much better job than me, I know. Pelearon Elementary School Resource Officer Odell Glenn plays a vital role in the education process. In fact, WISTV and Mungo Homes agree with that. They recently honored him with the WISTV Mungo Homes Community Builder Award. A member of the Pelearon Police Department, Glenn talks to students about the dangers of drugs and the importance of making good and healthy choices. He establishes personal relationships with students, and he knows what it takes to keep our elementary students engaged. For instance, during the school's homecoming week, he dressed up for the various theme days and played music complete with speakers and lights during morning drop-off car duty. And I think there's an example right there. He said he will use his one thousand dollar prize money to go to an organization called Soul Stepping. Soul Stepping buys shoes and socks for needy children in Pelearon. Let's give him a round of applause. Is Officer Glenn here? He's not here tonight? Okay. The online giving platform DonorsChoose.org continues to support our educators' funding requests. Since July one, the district received nine hundred and twenty-nine items with a monetary value of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and three dollars and thirty-six cents from Donors Choose. Our most recent educators with fully funded projects include White Knoll Middle School teachers Leann Cogdal and Joanne Conger. Sixth-grade social studies teacher Leann Cogdal received a grant of three hundred and thirty dollars to purchase twenty-five copies of Everything You Need to Ace World History, which supports the new sixth-grade social studies standards for her classroom. Sixth-grade mathematics teacher Joan Conger received a five hundred and fourteen-dollar Donors Choose grant for a wobble stool and charging station for her classroom. These will all help their students learn. Let's give them a round of applause. On December second, the South Carolina Education Oversight Committee announced that Lexington County School District One received one of six grants designed to focus on improving children's readiness for kindergarten by enhancing the quality of pre-kindergarten programs for four-year-olds. Academic Assistance, Early Childhood, and Title One Coordinator Jessica Buzzard and her team, parent engagement specialist Melissa Martin, and preschool coordinator Diana Smith, wrote the seventy-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-two-dollar grant, which they will implement at Pelearon Elementary School with Principal Debbie Poole. The grant funds will increase opportunities for play and language and literacy development. It will also expand targeted professional learning for 4K teachers and staff. We can't thank them enough. Let me reiterate that. That's a seventy-four thousand dollar grant. And these ladies did that on their own time. Thank you all. Way to go.
One thing I will tell you from the community, prior to, of course, being in this position, when we would have a child age out of Baby Net, which is a state-run program for kids with just different occupational, physical, and speech therapy needs, they age out at three. And sometimes insurance can be a little spotty when it comes to getting these kids the services they need. And so we have made it a very common practice to refer the parents to Lexington School District One, to the early education program. And the feedback we get from the parents is always astounding. So we'd certainly appreciate that from you guys and encourage any, you know, of the local community to certainly make sure they utilize that resource. So I may have made y'all's job a little harder, I apologize. But I think y'all, that's the business you're in. So excellent job.
Great. Red Bank Elementary School continues to seek funding support for its Special Olympics project successfully. PE teacher Patty Corley received a four hundred and fifty-dollar grant from the Unified Champion Schools Program. This grant guarantees that the program continues to flourish and provide opportunities that lead to the creation of socially inclusive schools that support and engage all learners. Let's give Ms. Corley a round of applause. I want to thank you for taking the time to join us tonight. We are so proud of everyone. We love sharing our good news. When you step out, if you'll walk to the left, you'll find your certificates on a table out there, and someone from Communications will help you. We want to wish you all a wonderful holiday, and hopefully Santa will find all of you in the next week or so. Thank you. That was, I think that's the hardest one I've ever had. I know, we're gonna go ahead and start while you're walking.
Listen while you're walking.
Yes. We're now gonna go to nine point oh, which is citizens' participation. And I don't have any cards. Are there any cards? Okay, we'll move on. Okay, we're now gonna go to ten point oh, which are action items. And at this time, we have our second reading on ten point one for Policy ADC Tobacco-Free School District. And we're gonna go ahead and get the first motion. Should we, let's go ahead and get the first motion on the floor. We'll open it up for discussion, and then we'll do the subsequent motions. Is that okay with you? Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve Policy ADC Tobacco-Free School District for second reading?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Policy ADC Tobacco-Free School District as provided by administration.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, we now have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Caldwell so he can update us on this, and then we'll open it up for questions and comments from the board. Mr. Caldwell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Little. You will remember that in November, I brought to you first reading of a policy that you updated and approved in July. So we've spent several months talking about tobacco and nicotine-free schools. There are three policies that I'm bringing forward tonight. You'll also remember that all three policies have the exact same language. So if I'm speaking of one, I'm actually speaking of three. I can say this three times, or I can kinda combine it as talk about all three policies.
Let's go ahead and talk about all three, and then what we'll do, we'll subsequently do the other two.
Well, again, the policies are ADC, which is Tobacco-Free, Tobacco, excuse me, Tobacco and Nicotine-Free School District. Policy GBED, Tobacco and Nicotine-Free Workplace. And Policy JICG, which is Tobacco and Nicotine Used by Students. I presented some edits, some amendments for first reading in November. And since that time, we've made some additional edits. For example, under the board commitments, we added to the bullet about maintaining a hundred percent tobacco and nicotine-free environment unless the person is in a prescribed tobacco cessation program, because we were learning that that is probably gonna be more and more common. One of the questions that was asked, I believe, of Ms. Green at last in the November meeting, was she had received feedback about the staff consequences, and folks were looking for a more standard way of administering those. In talking with HR, it turns out that their Code of Excellence already addresses this. So they have a first, second, third, and fourth offense. And so what I've added, I've stricken the old language from the staff consequences and added exactly what is reflected in the Code of Excellence for human resources. Those are the, really, the major changes that I've made that we've made since the first reading of these three policies. So I'll open it up. Any questions you may have?
Actually, before they ask a question, Mr. Caldwell, can you just walk us through the reasoning behind the student punishments?
Sure.
Or the consequences? I shouldn't say punishments, I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong language. The consequences, yes, sir.
The policy that was adopted in June, or in July, had for first offense a one-day suspension and second offense up to three-day suspension, which was consistent with the old policy from June of 2019 back. We, as a district, have started taking a much more therapeutic approach to our discipline. We do realize that it is punitive by nature, but the goal is to change behavior, and simply, a simple punishment doesn't always get that. So instead of having a first offense suspension, out-of-school suspension, it is a one-day in-school suspension, and the student will be required to complete an online tobacco vaping cessation program while in in-school. Along with that goes, the item will be confiscated and not returned. There'll be administrative conference with the parents. There is a referral to law enforcement, because that's what the law mandates. And then it was omitted last time, but I've added back the suspension from the extracurricular activities. Second offense, instead of an out-of-school suspension, it's going to be a six hours of community service at the school where the student is enrolled. Also, a much more involved cessation program through a RADAC will be a requirement that the students fulfill, along with the law enforcement and the conference and those things. The third offense, we went very strong. So if you read it on paper, it looks very punitive, because our third offense is a recommendation for expulsion. The reason for that, however, is still therapeutic in nature, because we would like to think that at that point, a student would perhaps, would go through the expulsion process, but that may give them an opportunity to go to our alternative educational services where they could have an even more detailed, hands-on, therapeutic approach, much like we do the students with our drug and alcohol offenses.
Board, are there any questions or comments regarding these three policies?
Yes, Ms. Smith, I'd like to ask, I guess, maybe my colleagues that are of the medical profession. In the statement that was added that says, unless the person is in a prescribed tobacco cessation program, do we need to specify a physician-prescribed tobacco cessation program? Or doctor, I'm just wondering if we need to make that a little bit narrower so it's not just, you know, Uncle Joe prescribed this cessation program, so I've got to wear this. I don't know if that's necessary, if it's presumed.
Well, it was presumed by us, because when I see the word prescribed, I think of a medical prescription. But to your point, it could be someone who was not a licensed provider prescribing some sort of program, I assume.
Yeah, me too, but that doesn't always happen. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great point. You know, I think some of the cessation programs may be ultimately ran by potentially a nurse practitioner or a physician assistant. But at the end of the day, there is a M.D. sign-off. but at the end of the day, there is a, a M D sign-off on that. So, you're probably safe to say, unless the person is in a physician-prescribed tobacco cessation program, that's probably, if you use the word medically, now that I think about it, medically might be loose for interpretation. You know, probably physician-prescribed. What do you think, Brett?
I think licensed.
Yeah, yeah.
License would cover it, because then you'd be licensed by a state entity as a provider. So, a licensed provider would, would cover that concern, 'cause then you can't be, you know.
Right, 'cause that's what I'm thinking, you know, sometimes with stuff like this, if there's wiggle room, people will find wiggle room to-
So, if the person is in a tobacco cessation program prescribed by a licensed physician?
A licensed provider.
Licensed provider.
Yeah, 'cause then that picks up P A's, you know, nurse practitioners.
Do we need to make a motion to change that language?
'Cause this is the final reading, correct? I mean, we're, okay. So, I think, Amory, you're making a motion?
Yes, to add "by a licensed provider" to the end of that sentence.
Okay.
So, we have a, a motion to amend. I'll second it.
And we now have a motion to amend. We have a second. Let me put that down. Green, Powers, on the amendment. Are there any questions or comments regarding that amendment? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes. It carries seven to nothing. Is it unanimous?
Again, that amendment will be for all three policies.
Yeah, amended for all three.
We'll do, we'll do each, 'cause we've got them, we're already separating them out. So, we now have amended the policy. So, or is there any other discussion before we take a vote on the policy as amended?
Yep. Suspension from extracurricular activities for the day, open to, I guess, athletic code, open to band director, open to, I mean, what's the, I understand the policy has to be loose to allow for some freedom in there, but at the same time, it, what does it mean? Is it ju, just for that day, or is it dot, dot, dot?
Well, when it was, when it was an out-of-school suspension, it was for the time that the student was suspended from school. So, now that we don't have an out-of-school suspension, excuse me, it is, at this point, open to interpretation. But I will tell you, we've already begun meeting with David Bennett and the coaches and the high school principals to kinda have a consistent application of that.
Okay. And then, I could see one question coming up, where we allow for four infractions by staff, but only three by students. From an H R implication, is it more just to maintain consistency with what's currently in place for staff?
The reason as far as, because I lifted that directly from the Code of Excellence from, from H R. That's correct.
Okay. And again, from the sort of remedying side of this, does the health insurance offer to staff, is there a nicotine cessation program for staff? Or is it? Anybody know?
I do not know the answer to that.
It seems like, I, I remember that somewhere. But, but I, I can't swear to it, but I do believe that they do. There are, I know they do with nicotine. I mean, they do the, what's the drug that they use now to, to quit smoking?
Nicorette?
Channing's, yeah. Yeah, I think they pay for that.
Okay. I, I guess the only thought there being that, you know, getting along with that same line of, you know, you're really trying to encourage people to, to quit, and, and to give them resource for that. If the health insurance or something similar doesn't provide for that, you know, is there similar programming that can become available through L A D A C or something? I don't think there has to be a policy change regarding this, but just more of a consideration.
The state health plan does have a quit-for-life program available at no charge.
Okay.
To anyone thirteen or old, dependents thirteen or older as well.
Okay, great. And I guess the, the only other consideration, I know how much work you, you guys have put into the policy, and I think it's, it's pretty tight. I, I think it's important, 'cause it kinda hit me at two o'clock in the morning. We're dealing after the fact. So, the infraction has already occurred. So, how do we get to the prevention side? You know, are we trying to say that deterrence is gonna be enough? Or, you know, how do we address that moving forward? And again, this is not directly related to policy. It's more of application of the policy, and will it be enough? So, I would kinda really, you know, oftentimes, we, we make policy, and we kinda archive it, and the conversation dies. And what I can tell you is that big corporations rely on the A D D of our culture, and the fact that we have a very forgetful attitude, a lot of times. And this is still gonna be a problem, two months from now, still gonna be a problem six months from now, probably a year from now. So, I would kind of encourage maybe some monthly data, you know, coming back to us of saying, hey, these are what our rates look like, this is how comparatively looks to last year. We've made this policy change. Has it changed anything with regard to behavior? I've oftentimes found students to be, quite frankly, the best problem solvers you will ever have. I can still remember doing my soul conservation essay as a fifth grader. And so, you know, kinda putting this back to the students and saying, hey, you know, you get, you get, there's a problem here, guys, and, and we need your help figuring it out. And then, you know, I got some feedback from the community, just curious about staff education. There's, it's just such a changing, it's a moving target. So, how are we addressing proactively, I guess, is, is the bigger question there?
Well, through education, we can, we can continue to have those conversations with Dr. Tally's team. I will tell you, we are participating in a webinar tomorrow. We being some folks in student services. That may give us some, some best practices as far as not only the recognition, but the training of staff, because, you know, they're doing it in the, in the locker rooms, in the bathrooms, and in the back of English class. So, we're, we're kinda relying on the experts in the field to continue to train us, and then we take that information out to the administrators, who then carry it to the teachers. So, that's, that's how that matriculates.
Any other questions or comments, Board? Okay, let's see, we have a motion and a second with an amendment on this policy, so we'll now take a vote. We're still on policy A D C, which is Tobacco-Free School District. And so, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries with the amendment, and it is unanimous. Okay, well, now go to the second reading of policy G B E D Tobacco-Free Workplace. Do I hear a motion to approve policy G B E D Tobacco-Free Workplace for the second reading?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve policy G B E D Tobacco-Free Workplace as proposed by administration.
Okay. We have a, a motion by Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we now have a second on the floor. And let's see, there's Powers. Okay, and I, I don't think, do we need to discuss this further, Mr. Caldwell, or did you already discuss this one?
Yeah, it's really the same thing throughout. Yes, ma'am.
And at this time, I think we wanna amend it. So, Ms. Green?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to make a motion to amend this, to add "by a licensed provider" at the end of this sentence that we discussed earlier.
Thank you. We now have an amendment on the floor, as submitted by Ms. Green. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. We now have an amendment and a second, amendment with a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments regarding that amendment? Hearing none, we'll take a vote on the amendment. So, all those in favor of the amendment adding the words "licensed provider" to this policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous. So, we now have an amended policy, so we're gonna go back. Are there any questions or comments regarding the policy as amended, before we do the final vote? Hearing none, we'll take a final vote. All those in favor of approving policy G B E D Tobacco-Free Workplace as amended with the words "licensed provider," please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries, and it is once again unanimous. We'll now go to policy J I C G Tobacco Used by Students. Do I hear a motion to approve policy J I C G Tobacco Used by Students for second reading?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve policy J I C G Tobacco Used by Students as proposed by administration.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. We now have a second. And so, are there any questions or comments regarding the policy before we bring up the amendment? Okay. Do I have an amendment to that policy?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to propose that we amend the statement that we did previously to add the words "by a licensed provider."
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Are there any questions or comments regarding the amendment? Hearing none, we will take a vote on the amendment as submitted by Ms. Green to add the words "licensed provider." All those in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous. So, we now have an amended policy. Are there any questions or comments before we take the final vote on that policy? Hearing none, we are going to vote on policy J I C G Tobacco Use as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. And thank you, Mr. Caldwell, 'cause that's a lot of work. And, you know, I, I, we just went to a school board conference, and Ms. Green went before the legislative body and was stressing to them how concerned we are about vaping and what this epidemic in our schools. So, this board is very concerned with that. So, we appreciate you bringing all these to our attention.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Now, we're gonna go to ten point four, which are student travel requests. And I have been submitted a letter of recusal from Dr. Guyton. He has a child who is participating in this, so he will not be voting. Do I hear a motion to approve twelve student travel requests as presented?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the student travel request as submitted by Dr. Tally.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, on those twelve student travel requests. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Oswald has seconded it. Dr. Tally, is there anything we need to know about these trips?
Have any openings?
No, I think we have all the chaperones that we need.
Okay, great. Okay, remember, Board, we do have one recusal, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Madam Chair, I do vote aye in favor of all other travel requests.
Okay, okay. So, we, but we're gonna do, I think we did it as a slate. We're gonna do it as a slate. So, we're gonna recuse you from all of them, Dr. Guyton. That's okay. So, we have-
So, go on any of those that you wanna go on.
Yeah, so now that you've recused yourself, you are the chaperone paying for these trips. So, we have a six in favor, one recusal, and no, no opposition, so that motion passes. Board, in front of you, you have a board meeting calendar change. Do I hear a motion to approve the calendar change as presented? We're gonna get on the floor, and we're gonna discuss it. So, I need a motion. Can I get a motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, I make a motion to eliminate the February fourth, twenty ten, twenty twenty board meeting.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Green. Do we have a second? Okay, second from Mr. Anderson. Okay, Ms. Hill, go ahead and tell us what this is about.
All right, so the Lexington School Trip Board, remember, added six additional meetings on its board calendar. Those are in addition to the third Tuesday meetings that the policy requires. So, it's my understanding that you'd like to cancel the first meeting in February, February fourth, since the National School Board Association's annual advocacy meeting is in Washington, D.C., and there are several other conflicts, making it difficult to get a call.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hill. Are there any questions or comments regarding this calendar change?
Yes, who's going to this conference?
It, it hasn't been decided yet.
So, what if no one's going?
We always send two people, usually. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Okay, we are now gonna go to the superintendent's report, which is eleven point one. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Little. And Board, this is for information only. There are no votes on this particular portion of the agenda.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Tonight, we had a, a bit of a German flair to the beginning of our meeting. And thematically, along with that, we would like to talk about tonight about immersion two point O, and what the future looks like for immersion. And I don't wanna step too much on the presentation, but Lexington District One was a, was a leader in immersion in this state, and really in the country. And we've had, last year, if you recall, our first immersion graduates in French and Spanish, I believe. And as part of that, when, when you have a program for a fairly long period of time, we wanted to take an opportunity this year to re-envision and reimagine what our immersion program could be. And so, Dr. Speeses and Ms. Haji, I believe, are here tonight to talk about what immersion two point O looks like in Lexington One. So, I'm gonna turn it over to these ladies here, as they walk us through what we can imagine for our future.
Good evening. I'm here to, to ask you a question tonight, and then also to hopefully help you come to the answer. So, why immersion in Lexington, South Carolina? Sorry. So, have you ever tried to do something and had people tell you no? Something that you thought was very important, and that you felt very passionate about? And yet, someone said, it's too hard, it's too expensive, it's too challenging. But you knew in your heart that it was worth the challenge, and it was worth persisting against all of these obstacles. I imagine most of us have felt that way at times in our lives. And that is the story of immersion in Lexington, South Carolina, and Lexington County School District One. So, these are some pictures of some of our kids. When I, I first heard about immersion, when I was in graduate school the first time, for, my master's in teaching Spanish, and I was surprised, honestly, this was back in two thousand and five, that a public school district in South Carolina was offering such an elite and progressive program at that time. I knew that some elementary Spanish programs, the F L S programs, were getting cut, but here we were doing something very progressive. And what I learned as a Spanish teacher is that, unfortunately, our educational system is not really set up for multilingualism. In fact, there are lots of barriers. It could have to do with curriculum, finding qualified teachers, curriculum that's in French, German, Spanish, Latin, whatever language you're offering for us. It's French, German, Spanish, and Mandarin. And in spite of all the incredible benefits of bilingualism that you heard about at the start of the program, so, so much of the, of the system is set against us. And yet, what we're doing here in Lexington One is creating bilingual students through our immersion program, who can read, write, speak, and think globally, and have a global perspective. So, we have a lot to be proud of, in spite of all those obstacles. I wanted to share, we had a hundred and three students who earned the Seal of Biliteracy last year. This isn't all of them, they're not all immersion students, but many of them were. And that's double the number of any other district in our state, so we are very proud of that. We also had our very first district-wide summer immersion camp. We had two hundred and twenty students involved. We ended up with a waiting list, at all four languages, and it was really quite incredible. Fifty-two immersion students received A P credits in world languages last year. And we have study abroad partnerships. These are formal agreements with sister schools in France, two in France, one in Germany, and one in China as well, that, and this is with immersion and, and world language students are allowed to, to all go. But these were started by immersion teachers. So, we, we also have a lot of data to be proud of, in spite of all the obstacles that, that we mentioned earlier. And so, if you look at our state testing scores, you'll see elementary immersion at the top. Our students continue to score as well as or better than students who are not in immersion, even though the state testing is done entirely in English. And so, in the math, our students are learning their language, their math in the second language. So, we're, we're looking for the green and the blue, is what we wanna see more of. And so, you'll see with immersion, the scores are great. And the same is the case for our middle school immersion in the state testing. You'll see they're scoring as well as or better than their non-immersion peers. So, I also have included some language. This is our second standardized testing for second language. So, and this is Gilbert Elementary, so it would be Spanish, the testing. And you'll see the national average is in green, and the Lexington District One average is in blue. And I included this because I wanted you to understand, they're tested in the reading, writing, listening, and speaking in the language that they're immersed in, so Spanish, French, German, or Chinese. And in order to qualify for the Seal of Biliteracy as a junior or a senior, students have to have at least a five. You might notice that in the listening, our kids in fifth grade are already at a five majority, and certainly some kids have scored fives all- and certainly some kids have scored fives all the way across. Um, and prior to this year, we were not close to the national average, but in the last year, we've made hu- actually huge, um, increases. And I wanted to focus especially on the writing, because you'll notice that in the blue, in many of the areas, not in every single one, obviously, but in many of the areas, we've actually surpassed. If we're not close to meeting, we've surpassed the national average in writing. So that would be in the second language. So it's pretty, pretty good. Um, so, Dr. Little asked me, as he mentioned to you, to kind of articulate my vision for 2.0 as I stepped into this role. And I shared this with our elementary immersion principals recently, and they're very excited, um, to work together towards growing our immersion program in the following four areas. So first, the number of students and retention of students, so keeping them in the program long-term. Quality of the program, so that would be the language proficiency and their academic achievement, which you see we're already doing well, but we, we don't want to rest on that. We want to continue pushing. Um, access to enrichment opportunities. And by that, I mean things like the summer camp and the study abroad and other, um, opportunities that we're trying to offer. Um, and finally, closing the achievement gap for English learners through two-way immersion. And this is happening primarily in Gilbert. And I also want to take this moment to share the, the fantastic news that we will be growing our immersion program in Gilbert, uh, at both the new Centreville, uh, uh, school and at the new Gilbert Elementary School. So immersion will be at both schools. So that's, that's big news. We're excited about that.
What's the current retention rate? You said you wanted to increase that. So what's, where are we today?
I'd have to give, I'd have to get the numbers for you. I can get those for you.
Thought process ballpark is where 80%?
Around, we are. Around 10% of students end up leaving the program, um, for, uh, for reasons other than moving out of the district. So it's not astronomical, but we just, for the health of the program, we want to continue to lower that whenever possible.
Well, I know, but when you consider K through 12, 90% are complete. And I thought it was high the last time.
It is. It is. Yes. So just to go back to the story I started with of finding, when I heard of this elite progressive program, um, fast forward to 2013, I was back in school, um, at the University of South Carolina, finished working on my PhD, and actually got placed for my graduate teaching internship at Pleasant Hill Elementary School. And I got to observe the third grade Spanish immersion class. Uh, my mind was blown. I was in love. And a year later, I, I found myself being the Spanish immersion teacher at Pleasant Hill Elementary in that same third grade classroom as they had, had the opening. I, I, I couldn't stay away from this program. I was so impressed with what we're doing. Um, went on to become the teacher support specialist and now, of course, the coordinator of the program. And so I believe 100% in what we're doing. I believe that immersion is making, um, Lexington a destination for teachers and families who value a world-class education. Um, on a typical day, I, I'm visiting schools, I might hear French, Spanish, Russian, Latin, German. Those are some of the, uh, other languages we offer in secondary as well. And, uh, while I'm not fluent in all of those languages or cultures yet, I leave at the end of the day feeling bigger, smarter, and more open to the world. And that's what I want for all of our students and families in our entire community. I want our students to be global participants and not just global spectators, not just watching it all happen. My son is at Midway Elementary and he has classmates from Lexington, France, Turkey, India, and Cameroon. So not only is he learning French, but he's learning how to connect and how to communicate with the whole world right here in our front yard. And so I ask you again, why immersion in Lexington, South Carolina? Because our students deserve the very best and should never be limited by their geography. And I also have a little video so you can hear from the students themselves.
3, porque es igual a 9. Okay. So it's, oh, 3, 3. No, no, ese es correcto porque ese es la mayor.
Little.
Sha, 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 sha.
Wu, wu. Hao, hao.
Sha, wu, hao.
Yeah, that's the one.
Hao, wu, very good.
Woo, hao.
That's very good.
Xie, xie.
Hao.
Yeah. Xie, xie. Bo, yong, xi, xie.
Ah.
Thanks, Xiao, Hao.
This is interpersonal.
Oh, yeah. Interpersonal speaking.
Right now.
So I, I, yeah, I think Spanish and French is, I mean, fully baked. We've graduated students through the immersion program. Uh, German, our oldest kids are in eighth grade now or fifth grade? And then in Mandarin? Oh, okay. I had a verse. Mandarin eighth grader. So we're four years out and seven, okay.
That's great.
Yes. How many of our schools don't have immersion?
We have seven elementary immersion schools.
Okay.
And seven, the, the middle schools and high schools that they feed in.
Right. Um, do we have any plans to expand the elementary immersion program?
At Gilbert, uh, at Gilbert?
Well, just, I know we visited Pillion Elementary, I think, last year or something. They didn't have any immersion, so.
They don't. And they, um, in the past, I understand, before I was here, the, the immersion has been offered to Pillion several times and there was not enough interest on parents at the time. But that doesn't mean we can't revisit it. If that's something that we're hearing that parents want, we would certainly be willing to revisit that.
Okay. So that's how that's decided, is just how many parents are interested? Okay.
If we can't get enough parents to sign up, to sign their children up for the program, then it's...
Right. It's pointless. Okay. Thank you.
And, and one of the things, while it's not immersion in the same sense of, of our, our second languages, but our coding immersion, uh, we've conceptualized like you would a, um, like a language immersion, um, in, in very similar ways. And so that we kind of, I, I sort of think of that as our fifth, uh, of our, of our fifth language in terms of that. But, um, it is very exciting to see our language immersion and as it's growing. And, and we're going to be, uh, giving you some different updates about what we got going on and, and how we're going to grow the program and, and what it looks like. So, um, thank you, ladies, very much. It's tremendous work. And, and both these, uh, young ladies are brand new to us in their leadership roles. And so we know that the future is bright for language immersion with their leadership. Um, Mr. Stacy is, can I just keep walking on? Um, Mr. Stacy's going to give us a, a quick staff conduct update.
Yes, sir.
I believe we're going to see that in January.
Thank you. Um, just to kind of give you an update is, um, I think back earlier, a couple of months ago, we talked about, um, some situations with staff conduct and how maybe our board policy didn't address a few things. So we have now looked at our, um, model policy that's provided by the School Board Association. And I will bring to you an update for first reading of policy G B E B, Staff Conduct. The changes in the policy will align with the most recent updated School Board Model Policy, and it will reference our Code of Excellence. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we had a committee, we worked through a Code of Excellence that works with our employees with staff conduct, but our policy n- needs to address that. So we're going to update that and I'll bring that to you for your first reading in January. All right?
A good deal. And now, uh, we have another, um, presentation that we would like to make, uh, of another dynamic duo of, uh, Jessica Bazzard and Erica Bissel are going to talk about our early learning centers and some of the work that's been going on with that and, uh, provide you an update with kind of where we are. And, um, I'm going to not step on your presentation and, and turn it over to you two.
I'm going to prepare you that ours is not as dynamic as Dr. Spees. We have no videos. We don't have cute children. We're not there yet. We haven't opened the centers, so we don't have any pictures yet. But, uh, but we were asked by Dr. Little and Dr. Tally to provide an update on a timeline for the early childhood centers in both Gilbert and Pillion. Um, and kind of to explain the research that's being done to ensure that we open centers that are, um, that are exemplary and that, uh, provide yet another opportunity and destination for families to have, to, um, Dr. Guyton's point, amazing early childhood opportunities for, for students that not only are, um, maybe being phased out of what's offered, uh, by government and by federal assistance, but also for all kids to have early childhood experiences. And we're going to show some reasons why that's so important on the next slide. So I'm going to, we're going to kind of just ping pong back and forth, but why early childhood? Um, there's consensus amongst the fields, several fields, that early childhood experiences and the experiences, especially between ages zero and five, have an enormous impact on a child's opportunity to, to thrive for the rest of his or her life. And so we talk a lot about when kids come to us in kindergarten, but by then, we are already have students that deficits, that have deficits. We really need to focus on, um, birth throughout, you know, through our, our public school system. But, um, between birth and age five is where a substantial amount of growth is happening. And if we don't have our hands in that, um, again, when they come to us in kindergarten, we are, we are starting at a deficit and it's going to take years and years to make up and close that gap.
Also, um, the early childhood years, specifically birth to age eight, is so important for laying the foundation for what's going to happen for the rest of a child's life. And so again, like Erica said, we have to have our hand in that and we need to grow that, um, based on what we're currently offering in Lexington One. And then also, um, the third bullet, um, there, this is really a crisis across the country. Um, the lack of high-quality, specifically affordable childcare for families is a major, major, um, crisis for working and middle-class families, and we want to be able to help, um, support that.
And you've seen me come to y'all to prevent, present Read to Succeed updates. And when I'm talking about third grade retention, it's because kids didn't have early childhood experiences in a lot of cases. They didn't not have reading proficiency just when they started third grade. There were gaps that had been created ever since birth. Um, and so if we do our job and do early intervention and provide early childhood services, which are beyond just academic services, and we'll talk a little bit about that too, um, then we can substantially decrease the amount of kids that we're talking about that are in retention, potentially even special services, um, and then retention, we could wipe it off of the, you know, the map as far as even being something that we need to discuss. Even though we love our summer camps, Mr. Anderson, we would be able to do it for different reasons, not just to close those gaps that weren't fulfilled when children were young. So there's also a need to provide high-quality early learning services that demonstrate a commitment to equitable outcomes for all children. So not only are, is high quality a key issue, but also equitable opportunity. And so, um, right now, we have systems where if you can afford a high-quality early childhood experiences, then your child will get a high-quality early childhood experience. If you can't, then the choices sometimes are of a lesser quality. And sometimes they're not, it's not an option at all, because the only thing that is available um, is something that is, is less, uh, equitable in nature as far as both academics, social, emotional development, et cetera. Um, and also literacy and numeracy would be a part of this. So usually see me talking about literacy, but this would include, um, child having early numeracy experiences and just early life experiences, being taught to, being exposed to things. And so we want to kind of harness all of this information that we have and provide opportunities in both Pillion and Gilbert to increase the number of opportunities, the quality of the opportunities, um, and to en- and ensure the equitable experience of all students in Lexington One. And then the, the last data point that we want to talk about for while, or why early childhood is actually right here at, at home, data right here from Lexington One. For the past three years, we've been giving a, um, state kindergarten readiness assessment, which is part of Read to Succeed. It's a requirement statewide. Um, and our data here in Lexington One shows that 66% on average over the last three years of our students entering kindergarten were not ready for kindergarten. And again, that has nothing to do with our kindergarten programs. This is kids coming ready. So we test them within the first 45 days of school and we test them in, in specific areas to include literacy, numeracy, social, emotional development, and physical, um, development. And so 66%. Now, those aren't the kinds of numbers we're used to seeing in Lexington One. And so we do a really good job closing those gaps based on our data as we move forward. But just think about if we could have hands-on experiences with those kids earlier, how much of the gap we could close before then they're ready for kindergarten? Because as soon as they enter a grade, not ready? Just think about, we want a year's worth of growth. If you're starting already behind, that year's growth, you're, it, it, to close that gap is going to take acceleration. And acceleration is this thing that we struggle with because of the amount of, uh, instructional hours that we have with kids. There's just not enough time in the day and a time in the year to do the kind of work we need to do when we're talking about closing achievement gaps.
I'll, I'll be honest, Dr. Bissel, I, I was really surprised by that number. And so you said that's in the last three years?
It's an average over the last three years.
Prior to that, what kind of numbers did we have?
So we didn't have an assessment tool. Um, and in kindergarten, uh, we didn't have anything that really assessed readiness. So we have assessments once they've been with us for a quarter, what, for a quarter in kindergarten or a semester in kindergarten. But this is really assessing, and we tell our kindergarten teachers, this is not what you've done with the children. And that's why we encourage them to give the assessment as soon as possible. This is to really determine, are the children prime for the kindergarten experience?
Is anybody working with like, I know there's just some phenomenal kindergarten programs in our community. Um, they've been around, gosh, 40 and 50 years, some of them.
Preschool programs?
Yes. Does anybody ever work with them? Because maybe they don't know what there's, where those children should be and where the standards should be.
Right. So, um, we have plans to, um, visit those centers in the community and invite them in, um, for professional learning, to show them what kinds of experiences we need kids to come to kindergarten with.
Okay.
So, future plans.
Yeah.
And, and that's all in the effort to, um, have a collaboration, not to say you need to do it our way, but so we can learn from them and they can learn from us and we can all be going after the same thing. All right. So, all of the, the really important stuff aside, the why, here's kind of the brass tacks of what we're going to go after in the next few years as we, as we prepare to open these centers. So this year, we're kind of in the research phase. We're looking at building designs. And so just as a reminder, we will be looking at two of our existing buildings, the current Gilbert Elementary School, uh, repurposing that for, uh, the Gilbert Early Childhood Center. And then we'll be looking at the current Pillion Middle School and repurposing that for the Pillion Early Childhood Center. So in order, um, to do that, we want to make sure that we're making really sound building design decisions. Um, and so we're, we're using a lot of, uh, opportunity to visit places, both virtually and in person. Um, we're, you know, trying to, to learn as much as we can, so, uh, we can, as Dr. Little says, measure twice and cut once. We don't want to, nailed it, right? We don't want to go in and do, and have, um, you know, what we think is a grand plan and then get halfway through and decide, oh, wait, that's not going to work for these little ones. And we're talking about everything from the size of how, where everything is matters. You know, there's a lot of things we need to consider when we're repurposing buildings that haven't been used for this in the past. So we're really doing, um, a lot of research around, around building design. Programming needs, we want the space to be outfitted appropriately to, um, fulfill the programming needs that we know that these children need to have experiences with. Um, we also are looking at a potential museum-like space where we can have not only academic, traditional academic experiences for kids, but also enrichment experiences and experiences that they may not have if we didn't have this museum-like experience for them in district and onsite. And so we will be coming with a lot more information about that as this timeline, um, and the planning expands. And then we also are looking at a parenting center expansion. So we have a parenting center in the heart of Lexington at our AES facility. Um, and we, based on a lot of conversation that Ms. Bazzard has had with the parenting center, we think that they are an untapped resource and that they- that they are an untapped resource and that they are not hitting all ends of the community. And we need to provide those resources to all of our families. And so, we need to look and see if the Peleon Center and the Gilbert Center might be places where we can expand those services. And then we're also going to be proposing in the budget for this coming year, an additional FTE for 4K at Centerville and at what will become Gilbert Elementary School so that we can serve an additional 40 4K students. Because again, we have waiting lists for 4K. So, that tells you that people are looking for high-quality early childhood experiences and they're not finding what they're looking for. And they're on our waiting list and we don't, we have a high demand and we don't have enough resources to fulfill the need.
All right. So, that was what we're working on currently. So, for next school year, 2020, 2021, and we've gotten really, really good at saying 2020, 2021. We're going to continue researching the programming needs and the potential for the museum-like space in terms of the programming. So, this year, we're researching additional curriculum for 4K to match what experience they're getting in 5K. So, that again, kids can be ready for kindergarten and we decreased that 66% we don't like to see earlier. We're also piloting a preschool inclusion initiative. So, that, this means that approximately half of a classroom would be students with IEPs and the other half of the classroom would be general ed children. We want to, and we're working with the State Department to do that. So, there's a preschool inclusion initiative across the state and we've joined that this year. So, we're just in the early stages of that. So, we'll continue that next year. We want to, next year, we're going to finalize the building design for what we're hoping for the building and start to renovate the current Gilbert Elementary Campus. And also the, what Ms. Smith spoke to earlier, the community engagement, we're going to start hosting those meetings where we're bringing in childcare professionals that are currently serving children that we aren't able to currently serve so that we can connect the dots for those pieces.
And our community engagement will also include parents and the Gilbert community and the Peleon community as we move forward to Peleon to ensure that, that we're offering the type of services that they feel that the community needs and the community may be lacking or that they're having to go too far to have a certain service. Is there a possibility that the Early Childhood Center can provide some of those resources so that they bring them closer to home? So, those community engagement meetings will be multifaceted, face-to-face, and will be a kind of bring everybody to the table type experience. And then in 2021, 2022, if you can even believe it.
We're going to do this for 10 years.
Yes. Well, we wanted to open it next year, but we thought that might be too soon. So, continue renovations of the current GES campus, present staffing proposal and budget needs for Gilbert Early Childhood Center, which will open in, ta-da-da, August of 2022. So, in August 2022, we will open, plan to open Gilbert Attendance Area Early Childhood Center. And then a year later, using everything that we've learned, so Gilbert is going to be the lead in this project, but we hope to take everything that we've learned and accelerate the process for Peleon, knowing that everything that we put in Gilbert, the research outside of the community input, that could be very different. And we want to honor the input of each community independently in case that, so that we know that they may have different needs. But exclusive of that, the research should guide the development and the renovations and the building design and the programming needs in both early childhood centers. So, then in 2023, how many of us are still be here in 2023? Peleon Attendance Area Early Childhood Center opens. And we are very excited and we want to have centers that are second to none in the state because we don't do anything less than Lexington One and we dramatically want to reduce that 66% in collaboration with all of those birth to five providers, to include our pediatricians, to include our, our community providers, our public libraries. Everybody has a stake in this game and we want to bring everybody to the table so that we can give the best beginning to our children.
The conference that Ms. Smith and I went to last week, just turn myself off, it's our Legislative Advocacy Conference and it's kind of anticipating legislative needs and priorities for this coming session. And there were two panels. There was a panel on Saturday that was legislators. And it was, our own Paula Calhoun was there and she's been on, in the house for a year. And then there was Jerry Govan, who I think has been serving since maybe the early 90s. But all four of the legislators, it's the first time since I've been going that all four of them, and they're different, you know, both sides of the aisle, talked about that the focus needs to be on early education. And then, I mean, and it was really good to hear them, that they just kept agreeing and emphasizing that. And then on the, on Sunday, our panel was education advocacy lobbyists, Kathy Manis was there and SEEA, the SCADA, Pam Mills was there, Lisa Ellis from SE4ed. And they also all were echoing that priority. So, I think it finally seems that people have realized that for South Carolina, the education question, that's the answer. And I thought it was so good. I think it was maybe Lisa Ellis was the one, I thought this was just a brilliant idea with Read to Succeed, that requirement, which seems like a good idea on paper to a legislator that's not a classroom teacher, that every certified teacher has to take a literacy class, that instead take that fund, those funds and put them, put it into early education. And what a leapfrog that would give us in being able to fund what everybody sees as a priority. So, I think y'all are doing, I mean, amazing, amazing work. And I think that you're going to be at the front of what's the tidal wave in this because I think this, these efforts are coming and I think people have realized that South Carolina needs this. I mean, you know, Lexington One is fortunate in that we have leaders and the opportunity to do this for our students. But there are a lot of communities that don't. And it's just so vital because you're right.
We're also blessed that our community voted on the bond referendum and they're supporting this.
Well, and I can't imagine on the kindergarten readiness assessment in Lexington One, that 66% are not ready. I cannot imagine in areas of our state where there are no pre-K options, what that, how those students, how far behind they're starting. I just cannot possibly imagine that. So, hopefully advocacy efforts will really help you out and maybe the funds will come too, to make this a little bit easier. But I'm really excited about this.
Thank you. It is definitely the conversation and we appreciate the leadership that's supporting the effort. Anything else?
I just want to say thank you. You know how wonderful I think all of this is. And I've been on board with you for a couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why are y'all only requesting one full-time position in Gilbert at Centerville and one at Gilbert Elementary?
Yep.
Because I understand there's a pretty long waiting list. I'm just wondering why you aren't requesting more.
There is a waiting list. So, we were charged with thinking about how we could start to expand that next year and so that it's not such a huge hit in one year when we open the Early Childhood Center. So, we proposed to add 1.0 FTE, but that will serve 40 students. So, it would be a half-day program, which would move approximately, so on average, there's anywhere from 60 to 80 kids that are on the waiting list. And those, those come and go depending upon, you know, transient families, et cetera. But by doing two half-day programs, that would move, you know, two-thirds of those children off of the waiting list for 4K. So, how it would shake out would be at Centerville, there would be one full-time, well, two full-time teachers. One would be full day and that teacher would serve 20 children. The other teacher would be half-day teacher and she would serve 40 children. And then the same would be true at Gilbert Elementary. A 1.0 full-day FTE and a 1.0 half-day FTE.
Well, until the legislature catches up with the state and federal level, that's, it's increasing millage to our businesses. So, that's, I think that's the balancing act we have to do as a board, deciding how much we want to raise taxes. Which again, I mean, I think the program everyone's in support of is just making it fiscally responsible.
Absolutely.
And I do think there's some downstream opportunity cost of doing this. So, my hope is that the cost of these students in first, second, and third grade is actually less. So, we would regain some of the expenses.
Exactly.
But my guess is it's not a one-for-one in return. So.
Not yet.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be if we can close the gap significantly enough, that interventions and some other of the outside supports that we're putting, some financial support towards, we would hope that we would be able to offset some of those needs and be able to put those needs then in a different area. So, it's, you have to give something, you know, to get something. But we can definitely also provide a phase-in plan. So, what it would require to move all kids off the waiting list, what it would require to move, we also have space issues. So, there are some.
That was my question, yeah.
We'd like to do it all, but there are a lot of cost benefit that we have to weigh. But we'd be happy to provide any plan that you would like to look at and then make the decision that's best for the district and all areas.
Absolutely.
Just hypothetical, do you think if you did something that phased in, that moved everybody off the waiting list, that more people would say, hey, there's no waiting list and sign up? I mean.
One thing that we want to go after and Ms. Bizard's working with Ms. Hill is communication. So, we do think there's a lot of folks, and Dr. Geithen kind of already set us up for this perfectly, who don't know about our programs.
Right.
And so, the more FaceTime it gets, we think we will continue to have people come and say, oh, I didn't even know. You know, a lot of times it's through siblings or through family members. Oh, my child participated in 4K. Oh, I didn't know Lexington had a 4K. So, it's communication. So, yeah, I don't know that we would ever be able to eliminate the waiting list or eliminate fulfill all the need, which is kind of a good problem to have. Sorry. It's kind of a good problem to have. But again, I think we can continue to go after giving as many opportunities as possible with the hopes that the better the program, the more people will seek the opportunity.
Is it still primarily, would it primarily be needs-based or?
So, currently it is needs-based. Most of our programs are needs-based. We do have a few tuition-based programs that are, that are not needs-based. And so, we would like to have more opportunities across the board.
So, the funding that we receive is EIA funding and it states that those funds are used based on need, specifically based on poverty levels of the family. And we like to think about, I'm not sure which one of you said this earlier, but we're thinking about, I think it was you, Dr. Powers, when you were saying like, it's going to prevent a lot of problems later, right? So, prevention instead of retention and instead of intervention, which is what we're doing a lot of. Now, we're playing a lot of catch-up, which is what Erica spoke to earlier. So, hopefully increasing the opportunities. And then as far as the cost factor, you know, some states have adopted universal pre-K. And until we adopt universal pre-K, you know, we're always going to have a waiting list and be trying, you know, try to catch up.
And we have to use the funds as they are allocated. So, currently, the majority of the funds for early childhood are, are based on a needs.
So, where we can to match two cohorts that over a three- to five-year period, we could make a value proposition to tell a story would be good.
Yes. And we'd also like to look at, and we're working with Dr. Phillips on a half-day versus full day. I mean, there's lots of things because if you go to full day, which we, just on the novice end, think is, is better for kids and there is research to support it. But that increases the number of FTE because now a teacher that serves 40 can only serve 20. But we also think that's a better experience for kids. So, we need to do some comparisons and talk about all the possibilities. Because again, if we're going to do it, we need to do it right and we need to do it at Lexington One standard, which is nothing less than the best.
Yeah. I think I would, I would certainly echo some of the sentiment of the board that I would expect a hockey-like graph in terms of interest because when you're in the community and, and I've never met a lottery winner, but when their child gets into a pre-K program at Lexington One, it is as if they have won the lottery. And so, it's complete celebratory. And so, this will certainly feed more of that, but I would expect to see a, so just be prepared.
Yeah. Thank you. Anything else?
All I can say is go and grow.
Thank you. And we'll be back in April with another update.
There are some exciting opportunities with early childhood and good stuff, good stuff. And as usual, Mr. Jeff Salters gets to present last. And, and that's a tough act to follow there. But I will say that we appreciate operations because we've been in quite the communication with operations about what this facility will look like. And it will be a, it will be this form and function about an early childhood space. We're keeping our fingers crossed about a museum-like experience for some access. And, and that needs, that's going to be directly related to our facilities and what our facilities can provide. So, thank you for your team to, for that collaboration as well. So, Mr. Salters, your operations update.
Thank you, Dr. Little. Just briefly this evening, as you recall, Centerville Elementary School is slated to open in August of this year, as we've talked about. And it will, as you now know, will hold pre-K four through fifth grade. And then, of course, we'll be renaming Gilbert Primary School to Gilbert Elementary School and it'll be pre-K three through fifth grade. And then we'll be working diligently on the Early Childhood Center. So, very excited about that. And we've seen some good progress at Centerville. And we remind you, this is the prototype plan we talked about earlier, related to the property that you voted on earlier. But you can see some, this is the front entry parking lot and driveway area, starting to take shape. We're actually starting some roofing on the rear of the school here. The fine arts cafeteria wing is over here to the left and some of those walls are coming up. Well, we have masonry going on, on all four wings now. And the weather hasn't impeded us very much. We had, did have a good bit of rain, obviously, last Friday and then again today. But with the site soil conditions here, it's been very conducive to continuing to work for the most part. So, and you can see, good progress being made. We're going to be, be in the school in August. And it might be a photo finish for some of the moving of the materials and so forth over from the other schools. But we'll, we'll be happy, happy to be in there. So, and I would just remind you, as you look at these pictures, this school started about two to three weeks before Peleon Middle School. And so, there is, in an elementary school, you do have a lot of toilet facilities, restrooms in your classrooms. There's a lot of underground plumbing and things that has to occur to get it out of the ground. But you'll see a little bit different perspective as we move on to Peleon Middle School. And actually, today, we had a tour with some of the, the mayor of Peleon and town council member visited Beechwood to give them a taste of what this facility is going to look like. But you see it, at Peleon Middle School prototype of Beechwood, we've got all three classroom wings, two-story classroom wings are up and built to the second floor. All those steel will be, was being set on the second floor here. And last week, and moving to this area this week, permanent roofing is being installed on the cafeteria. That's already up and all that area is built. And the first A-wing there, classroom area is also up and built. The auditorium area has been poured, the stage area's been poured. So, all the concrete slabs now have been poured, but you can get a better perspective here of the steel. So, it's really moving along out in Peleon. The idea here originally when we started with this was to take occupancy mid-year. I continue to kind of push the contractor and pick with MHD Rentals that we really would love to take occupancy in August. And they continue to assure me that that's probably not practical, but they are making really good time. So, we're still trying. And that would be a really almost, you know, four to six months ahead of schedule if we were able to do that. So, but I wouldn't anticipate an August opening here. We're looking at a mid-year opening. Because once you, once you get inside the building, things will slow down. But you see great progress has been made today, really on both of these jobs. Also excited about some improvements at Peleon High School. And this is the track, which actually is located behind Peleon Middle School adjacent to the Performing Arts Center. This was the last track in the, in the district that was a six-lane track. And they, the track surface has been removed, demoed. The track has been widened, a new curb has been installed and ready for paving and then the surfacing that will go down. So, we're also redoing the jump events. So, this jump lane here will go away. It's actually going to be moved on to the other side. There were some bleachers over here, visitor bleachers, and those have been removed. And we've improved the home side bleachers and actually the jump events, the triple jump and the long jump are being installed right here along this way. So, visitors can very easily see those going on. And these bleachers are being made ADA accessible, hence the concrete that you see there. And some drainage is being. Um, and some drainage is being installed, um, there were some drainage issues on that field and around the track, so that's all being cleaned up, and, um, also the, um, this is the high jump area, um, was, was really, um, uneven and, and, uh, not level with the track, and so it, it became a, kind of a tripping hazard if you got, got some speed up and around that curve, uh, you could sprain an ankle pretty easily. So all that's being straightened out, and, um, that'll be paved and, and redone for the, uh, high jump area. The building is also, um, the concession building area has been, uh, demoed, and, uh, footings are being, uh, poured there to build the new, uh, track concession building, so good progress being made there at Pillion. Um, we're excited about, um, all the things we have going on, a lot of planning with architects and engineers for projects coming up this summer, and we'll, you'll, we'll start to see some of that work, um, here as we get back from the break, um, we'll talk about some more of that, but you can always follow our progress here on the, uh, website, um, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Board, from Mr. Salters? I'd like to thank Mr. Salters and Ms. Layton for setting up that tour this morning. We had, uh, the mayor of Pillion and one of their council members. We had a good portion of the town of Lexington's, um, uh, police force, and several of their council members came and toured Beachwood today, because that's the prototype for Lexington Middle School and for Pillion Middle School. Jeff gave a great tour, and, um, they were so impressed with, especially with all the security measures that Jeff and his team have put in place. Matt, I know you're sitting back there, and John, they were just really impressed with all the things y'all have done and worked out for that building, and they're real excited about that prototype, so thank you on that. Um, let's go to 12.0, which is first reading, and this is a policy which does not have a number, and I found out last time, it is to be determined, animals for instructional purposes, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stacy to give us an update on that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just as I told you last, um, month, we had a committee that reviewed, um, we realized that we didn't really have a policy that addressed animals in schools, and so we pulled together a committee of the, um, science coordinator, director for school counseling, coordinator of section 504, director of special ed, and the coordinator and director of human resources to address this, um, concern. Um, we reviewed, um, the school board model policy and recognized that theirs really primarily was an instructional policy that addressed, um, service animals in the classroom, and that we really have a need to try to, um, I guess, monitor the use of animals for instructional purposes. So, um, we're going to bring to you, ultimately, we'll bring to you four policies, but we're going to start with, uh, animals for instructional purposes, which is the policy that I have tonight. Um, it is not replacing a policy, because there isn't a policy, and we've looked at the school board policy and edited it for, um, our use, um, I provided that for you. We've also provided for you some procedures there, you wouldn't approve the procedures, that's just how we kind of do business with this, to get them approved, but I wanted you to be able to see those, so you could kind of understand how that, um, policy would be put in place. But it's coded TBD, because it's to be determined. Um, once y'all have approved it after second reading, we'll take it over to the School Board, um, Association, and they'll codify it for us.
Any questions for Mr. Stacy, Board? Okay, thank you, Mr. Stacy. Um, moving on, we'll go to 12.2, which is first reading for the 2020, 2021 Board Meetings Calendar, and we'll turn it over to Ms. Hill for this one.
As you know, and we talked about it earlier tonight, the Board, um, has a policy that requires a third Tuesday meeting at it, for each month. Um, so you see on the attachment that you're given that we have marked the third Tuesdays by circling them in red, um, that's for the 2020, 2021 academic year. Um, June is the only exception, we could have done the third Tuesday, but we're asking you to make an exception to June because of the budget process. Um, there often, we have to come back to you and ask you to change that, because the legislature doesn't formalize their budget until the end, which impacts our budget process. So we thought we would go ahead and plan for that longer time period, if you approve it. Um, those are the first 12 meetings with the third Tuesday formula, and then there are additional seven, not six, as I wrote on there, seven meetings, um, they're circled in blue on your calendar, um, that would be the second meetings that we did for the first time, actually, you know, this year at your request, so we're proposing those. I know you need some time to look at it and think about it and ask questions, feel free to reach out to me and ask me any questions about calendar. Um, you'll notice that some of the third Tuesdays do come after one-day holiday, um, such as Martin Luther King or Labor Day or something like that, um, but we're, we are quite practiced at doing that now, and so that's not an issue for us, as long as it's a one-day.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Are there any questions or comments for Mary Beth?
Well, not for Mary Beth, just for Board discussion in general, um, I don't think we need all of these extra meetings. I think it would be helpful if the honors and achievements had their own venue and their own time, and not necessarily during the Board meeting. Um, if the Board wanted to be actively engaged, then the Board Chair could emcee that, um, so we could use, I understand we need some of these, you know, and to approve new hires before school or, um, new board member training, but, I mean, we don't need a low pack or performing art, any of them, we could just have a school cafeteria with a stage, and then it would save on printing costs, we could do it, you know, four or five times a year, as opposed to every month that we have a Board meeting. It would be less work for the communications staff, since there wouldn't be award ceremony during the Board meetings, um, and they wouldn't need to be recording. It would be more work time for us during the Board meetings, instead of doing, um, award ceremonies.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison, that's something for us to consider. I, I personally can't imagine it, because we, we stay so busy, and I, my favorite part of the meeting is seeing the students and the parents and celebrating all the successes, but I thank you for your.
That's, I mean, we could still do that, we would just take these extra dates that we don't really need, because if you look back, um, overall the dates we had the last year, two of those were new board member training, and one was just an update for new Board members as to how business is done, and in two of those, executive session lasted longer than the actual meeting. So we could just take care of all of that during our regular Board meetings, and I would hope we would all still go to the award ceremonies, since we already have these dates on the calendar, and we would just do recognition instead of the actual Board meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Garrison.
Oh, one other thing. Ms. Smith, before I forget, because I might forget if I leave here and don't mention this now, um, in the text paragraph, it says the proposed second meetings would be added August, October, January, February, March, and May, but those are not the months that are listed below that. Um, instead of, so, October, there's September, and instead of January, there.
Okay, thank you. I also got the six and seven mixed up, so.
So another thing is, um, I have written down here, we have outgrown the space. Um, I know we got an email after the last meeting in May of last year, um, a lady was complaining about, you know, the fire marshal and the exits being blocked and standing room only, so, and tonight I noticed there were standing in the back of the room, so, just for several different reasons, I think it would be beneficial.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Garrison.
Yeah, I guess I'll kind of, philosophically, uh, this may be something we want to, to kind of look at in terms of, of the extra meetings. Um, I can tell you from like the Board visits, um, from a, a, an employee perspective, it can be hard, it can be hard to make Board visits. Um, now, obviously, you know, the Board is made up of retirees, the Board is made up of, of people, you know, who are actively involved in careers, um, and then when we have like a cancellation of a Board visit, so, you know, if I were to move patients, and trust me, people get upset when you cancel their doctor's appointment, um, and then to have it canceled, you know, the Board visit canceled or moved, it, it does make it hard for, um, for Board members to actively attend, um, working Board members to actively attend, um, um, Board visits and those kind of things, and really to kind of get exposures to the school. I know y'all had mentioned that y'all in the past had maybe gone out to the community, um, and done some Board, some Board meetings at the schools, and, but obviously, they weren't well-attended or something along those lines, um, which obviously, we would, you know, we could kind of talk through, but, um, it would be a point of consideration that, um, uh, maybe it does offer us a chance to have a little more exposure to the school for ones who can't make Board visits and, and those kind of things, you know, on a consistent basis, um, just a, a point of consideration there.
That's a good point, too. Thank you, Dr. Guyton. Okay, um, Board 13.0, or items for Board information, this includes your monthly general fund financial report, your monthly general fund budget transfers, your monthly capital projects report, your monthly unauthorized procurement's report, and your quarterly grant award report. I just wanted to mention a couple of things that have gone on since we last saw you. Um, Dr. Powers, Dr. Guyton, and I attended a musical review at Beachwood, which typically, I wouldn't really go into too much detail on that, but it was a three-night review, it was sold out, and 1,500 people attended a musical review at a middle school, and these kids were phenomenal. So it just, that school had just opened, and the kids have only been practicing since September, and I was so impressed, so I don't know, Dr. Guyton and Dr. Powers, were y'all impressed, it was something. Um, I think, uh, Dr. Little held some parent forums at Gilbert and Pillion, and I think they were very well-attended and, uh, very well-received, so that was some good information. And then we, the whole Board went on a tour of Pillion Middle, and, uh, they're just doing some wonderful things at Pillion Middle, and that was just very heartwarming to see what all's going on out there, and they are counting down the days so they can get in that new building, so they're real excited about that. So we've had a lot of good things going on. We would like to wish all of you a happy holiday, and we just want to stress again how much we appreciate everybody and all they're doing for our students. We, we really are, I know we won the state award for the state newspaper, but that is true, we are the best district, in my opinion, so that was nice to have someone recognize that. Um, 14.0 is adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Great, I have a motion from Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Oswald, and we wish all of you a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and we'll see you in 2020. I, uh, please stand up if you say yes.